Regular session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023 in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous Peoples. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535 where the live stream of the video may be found. The agenda and documents for the meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/BoardDocs. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecquell and non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Treasurer Garcia.
Here.
Clerk McLaughlin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Workman.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose mission stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.01, Approval of the Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval?
Second.
Yes, the motion and a second have been made. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. A note to the Board and the community, if we're still meeting at 7 o'clock, we will be taking a 10-minute recess around that time. Item 3.01, Comments to the Board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the Board. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A, in accordance with Minnesota statute, set the time, place, and manner and restrictions on comments of the Board. The policy and procedure focus on privacy protections for students and staff, and prohibit comments that are threatening, profane, lewd, vulgar, obscene, harassing, abusive, or constitute a personal attack on an individual. We welcome two speakers this evening. When your name is called, please come to the table. Item 4.01, The 2021 Minnesota Teacher of the Year Natalia Benjamin. This is an information item. Superintendent Pecquell.
Chair Nathan and Directors of the Board, some of you may know we have a software system that's called Board Docs that we use for conducting our Board business, and every time I log into Board Docs, mine actually still goes back, it's essentially bookmarked, to August 17th, 2021, at a regular meeting of this Board when we announced that Natalia Benjamin, a Rochester Public Schools teacher, had been named Minnesota Teacher of the Year. And it's not the most efficient way for me to get into the Board software every time, but I like remembering that so much, I haven't changed it. And so every time I log in, we haven't had Natalia back since then to give the Board and the community a report on how she used that extraordinary year as Minnesota Teacher of the Year. We were pleased as a district to provide some support to help her do the work that she did around the state, and we've asked her to give us a bit of a sort of almost travel log update on what that year has been like. And as Board members are aware, I'm excited to share that since that time Natalia has joined us as our coordinator of multilingual learning, and is doing fantastic work that the Board will hear about with our students learning English and, we hope, retaining their home language at an upcoming Board meeting. So Natalia, again, congratulations, thank you, and hoping the technology works. We look forward to getting an overview of how you spend your years Teacher of the Year.
Buenos tardes. Mr. Natan, School Board members, Superintendent Pecquell, Cabinet members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to report on the last year and a half. I want to thank the support from Rochester Public Schools and also Rochester Education Association who collaborated together to provide support in the classroom for when I would step out and to be able to fulfill my duties. A lot of the things that I did had to do with different speaking engagements, and I want to start with some of the more choiceful ones. And that had to do with talking with aspiring educators. And the energy that you feel when you talk to those students, the questions that they're asking just gives you hope for the future in the education system, as well as talking to first-generation students, talking to former students who found me at the Minneteesaw Conference, they were in my advisory class, and then current Rochester Public School students who attended University of Minnesota for their professional course. Some of the other things that I was asked to speak on was on the state of education in our classrooms. At this time, we were coming back from distance learning and going to in-person learning in our schools, and so a lot of the community and different entities were wondering what's going on, what are the challenges, what are we facing in education? And so I had an opportunity to speak from the teacher perspective and what our students were experiencing. It was also an opportunity to spark about honesty in education, but also figuring out what was the needs that our students had in schools. I was asked to join different people in different podcasts, so whether it was national organizations like Elevations who provide professional development for EL teachers, to local people like Becky Montpetit who runs Rochester Local, just to inform about what we are doing in our schools. And another thing that I had an opportunity to do was to attend different conferences. The Arizona Department of Education asked me to come as one of the keynotes to share some of the work that I was doing with multilingual learners in the classroom. The other thing that I had an opportunity to do was to advocate for the teaching profession, and that had to do with testifying in the legislation when it came to fully funding schools, also to the requirements for English learners, and also collaborating with the Coalition to Increase Teachers of Color and the Coalition for Ethnic Studies, and I was privileged enough to share my experience and my thoughts on those topics. One of the most impactful things that I got to do was to participate in the National Program, and this is a year-long that happens on top of the state engagements, and it begins with meeting 50-plus educators from across the nation at the territories of the United States. And it's an opportunity to learn from each other, to hear their stories, but also to collaborate with entities, and to learn about the resources that they have that we can use in the classroom. It also included a visit to the White House, which was an honor and an opportunity to meet with the different legislators from Minnesota who were eager to listen about the needs in our schools and what they could do to support public education. Last July, I had the opportunity to attend the NASA Educators Camp, and it was fun to engage in different activities that can be replicated in the classroom as well as learning the resources that they have. But some of the most impactful things was to learn about the stories of some of the guest speakers that were there for us. One of them was Captain Robert Hood Gibson, who was a naval officer and also an aeronautical engineer, and so to learn his story from his humble beginnings to going to NASA, as well as the story of Homer Hickam, whose story was portrayed in the movie October Sky, based on his memoir Rocket Boys, and David Hood, who runs the Skylab at NASA. Last October, the Teachers of the Year attended what's called the Impact and Influence Conference, and we had a chance to really reflect on the impact that we can have, how to use our voices, but we had a surprise visit from Reverend O. Sharpen, and it was very impactful to learn about his thoughts on what our youth needed and what things we should be doing in the classroom to support their needs as they're living in the times that where they face a lot of different challenges. Some other opportunities had to do with community events. I was able to invite educators and some students to the Tunesa Social Workers game. I was invited to the Wilds game and to start that, and then this last, I have to think January, was the last event for the National Program, and so we had a chance to go to the College National Football Championship. And while it was lots of fun to learn, you know, of the correlation between sports and how that can support students, one of the biggest opportunities was to talk to Secretary Cardona, who was very interested in our thoughts regarding teacher retention and the things that can be done at the federal level to support teachers. I would also like to share some of the work that I did more locally and had to do with in our state. And the Legal Latinx Educators, which is part of Education Minnesota, had an event for Hispanic History Month. I was invited to share some stories with the Southern Minnesota poets. I attended LeaderCon and was honored to share my story, but also to meet some very wonderful storytellers like Maria Inojosa. And lastly, just a couple weeks ago, to attend our Public Library Foundation to share about multilingual learners and the work in education. But the work that I did resulted a lot because of the work that I did here in the district, and so I wanted to just share quickly some of that. I had an opportunity to collaborate with many teachers, and we provided some professional development for the district as well as working with other committees to provide summer programming for multilingual learners. The union work is something that has opened the doors for me when it comes to not only my learning, but also understand how some institutions work to support education. And that included visiting different teacher groups across greater Minnesota, and going to work with the Women's Issues Committee with the National Education Association, and attending the MEA Conference in October as one of the opening speakers. I was invited last May to attend the MEA Gala to be recognized for the Teaching in Excellence Award. But all of this is just the result of what grounds a lot of the work that I do, and I try to seek opportunities that help me grow. There's a lot of learning that I still have to do, there's a lot of learning that I'm curious about, and so that's what grounded a lot of my work. The Institute for Teachers of Color provides a lot of opportunities when it comes to learning about equity and things that are good for all of our students, and things that can inform teaching in the classroom. Attending the MEA Leadership Conference was a treat because I got to meet in person some of these wonderful educators, and they are some of the people that are doing great work in ethnic studies in California, and so to meet them in person after I had seen them in webinars for about a year was just a very exciting opportunity, and pairing that with some of the work that I was doing to get my National Ball certification. But some of the most important things had to do with teaching. And while there were many challenges in the classroom during distance learning and that we entered to in-person learning, the joy of the classroom is rooting and immersing ourselves in things that bring joy to our students. And I have my wonderful co-teacher Courtney Peterson and I, who really tried to find ways for our students to find joy in reading and writing, and to really find ways for them to tell their stories and to build their identities in a positive way so that they could reflect on the assets that they bring to our classroom community, but also their larger community. The other place of joy for me is ethnic studies, and really working with students who understand ourselves and understand the world around them, as well as working with other educators when it comes to applying ethnic studies to heritage and bilingual classroom settings. But last but not least, I want to end with some of the time that I spent with the students because the time I've spent in community with these students is one of the best professional developments that I have had. It centers my practice, it is why I advocate and I use my voice, and the stories that I learn from them are important, that is why I do the work that I do. It involved having students do action projects in ethnic studies so that they could use their voice, so that we could hear what's important for them, and so that they would be engaged in ways to find solutions to the problems that they see in their community. And then currently, that work has spilled into this year. As part of the network of ethnic studies that I know, I was invited to be part of a YPAR grant so that students could keep doing this work of really digging into what's important for them and finding solutions and bringing those to the teachers and their communities. And then I've had some RPS alumni who have reached out, who are really interested in giving back, and who reflect on what they have learned, what they didn't know, and are eager to give back to other EL students who are going through that and to share some of the knowledge that they have acquired. And so with that, I want to just thank you because this has truly been an amazing experience, and I could not have done that without you. And I could not have done that without the support of the school district, but also of dear friends who have checked on me, either really early morning calls or late-night texts, and my family, who has been there and has been willing to pick up other responsibilities at home so that I could have done this for the past year and a half. So, thank you.
I think I might, Madam Chair, just say one thing. Natalia, you are clearly an extraordinary teacher, but you are one among many extraordinary teachers in Rochester. And so, in that sense, I think you are emblematic of the gifted educators that we're privileged to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Natalia?
I just wanted to say thank you, not only for the amazing services that you provide as an educator, but for being such an able advocate and representative of Rochester Public Schools and using your time so well for those purposes. Just lots of gratitude. Thank you so much.
Director Garcia.
I would just like to echo what everyone else has already said. You are an incredible human being. And you were actually one of the first people that I met within the district that wasn't like school board and executive leadership. And I just remember thinking, I don't know who this woman is, but I want to get to know all of the work that she's doing and be able to support someone like her. And you are actually one of the people, you and actually Mr. Ruffin, were two of the individuals who sort of personally compelled me to run for the district because I wanted to support educators like you because educators like you do so much good for our students. And it's clear in all that you do. And I just, I really appreciate you personally and professionally. And I also shout out to your proud spouse over there, who's constantly cheerleading you. You make all of us proud. Thank you.
Director.
I want to, I didn't have a chance to thank you personally when you gave us the two volumes of Stories from the Classroom and Voices from the Classroom. Some really poignant stories, some sad stories, some joyful stories. And so, I would encourage my fellow board members, if you haven't had a chance to look at that, to take it out. I know I will be looking at mine again. So, thank you.
Natalia, you were a wonderful educator before you were named Teacher of the Year. And I'm really glad that the rest of the country, the world, got to see your skills and all the knowledge that you shared. But I think what's really important is how much you're bringing back to RPS from your experience. And if you don't follow this woman on social media, you really should because she is a font of knowledge and information and resources and inspiration in everything that you do. So, thank you. Thank you for sharing RPS and yourself when you were out there in the world, but we're glad you're back.
Agenda item 4.02, Education Support Professionals Month Proclamation. This is an announcement. Governor Walz declared January 23rd through January 29th as Paraprofessional Recognition Week. And I would like to read the proclamation. Whereas Minnesota is home to more than 20,000 paraprofessionals who provide services in multiple settings within schools, including support for instruction, student activities, and individual students, as well as numerous other tasks that contribute to educational success. And the support and services provided by paraprofessionals are integral to student achievement, resulting in more effective and successful Minnesota schools. And the state of Minnesota and the Minnesota Department of Education are committed to excellence in education and recognize the important role that paraprofessionals play in ensuring educational success. And Minnesota will celebrate the contributions of paraprofessionals during Paraprofessional Recognition Week. Now therefore, I, Tim Walz, Governor of Minnesota, do hereby proclaim January 23rd through January 29th, 2023, as Paraprofessional Recognition Week. We just want to add our thanks to our education support professionals, which I do like as the better name. We have heard many stories, especially in the recent weeks, about the contribution of our ESPs in our classroom. And we're here to support them for all that they do to support our students. So, thank you to all of you watching, to all of you in the audience. Item 4.03, Updated Titles for Off-Schedule and Non-Schedule Work Groups. This is an announcement. Superintendent Fekel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. Probably more than a few of us in this room had to, at some point in our school years, write an essay on what's in a name. I know I did. And names matter. Last year, as Chair Nathan just referenced, we worked with our union representing our education support professionals to talk about the degree to which the name "paraprofessional" conveyed what they do and was comprehensible to the world. And they ultimately decided it was not and went through a process and said they wanted to be known as education support professionals. And I was super enthused about that name. I know everyone saw, some of us still slip, including members of that great group. But there were another couple groups that, since I've been in Rochester, I have tripped over again and again and again and have said to our intrepid Human Resources Executive Director Carl Bakken, we have got to find another name for the groups previously known as, to make an intended Prince reference, non-schedule and off-schedule. To refer to dedicated talented employees as non-schedule or off-schedule just has always felt wrong. And so, we solicited some ideas from the people in those groups. And I am pleased to announce that the group previously known as non-schedule, which includes our mental health practitioners and our health office nurses, has elected to be known as mental and physical health professionals, probably MPHP for short. Definitely in my mind, an improvement over non-schedule. And the group that we previously referred to as off-schedule, which is a very diverse group of employees, it includes staff working in technology, coordinators and managers from several different departments, including maintenance, transportation, food service, human resources, community education, some central office personnel and human resources, accountants, office managers, equity specialists, people who work in our school-age childcare team leaders, activities directors, those all previously known as non-schedule will now be known as Rochester Operations Professional Employees. And theirs actually makes the word rope. I don't know if we'll choose to call them rope, but at minimum, we won't call them off-schedule. So, this does not require board action, but I know the board will join me in enthusiastically thanking these employees for their work and hereafter retiring upon pain of some severe penalty to be determined not to say non-schedule or off-schedule ever again to reflect the role these employees play in our district.
Thank you. And thank you for the work of everybody who came up with these new designations. I like them much better than the others that were not, those who will no longer be named.
Yes. That's right.
To make a whole more reference, yeah. All right. Next item on the agenda is 4.04, Board Member Committee Updates. Do any board members have any updates from their committees? Director Mervin.
Thank you. Two, I was invited to come to the Jeremiah Program to tour the facility there and talk with the director. The Jeremiah Program, and I think most of you know, is an amazing program in Rochester that is multi-generational. Moms and their young children are afforded the opportunity to have housing, education, kids get daycare, they get preschool. The mothers have the opportunity to get an education so that they can pursue employment. And it's, I think it's exactly the right thing to be doing, to work with kids and parents at the same time, with the goal of helping all of them become lifelong learners and become independent citizens who are going to give back to the community. The thing that I didn't know about that program is that they're working very closely with Sunset Terrace Elementary School because many of their kids there, that's the neighborhood school for them. And I think it's just another example of how our schools, even the ones that aren't community schools, become community schools and go way above and beyond to provide for the needs of the students and the families who are in that neighborhood. We also, just a heads up on a different note, we're going to be having student school board members attending the next school board meeting to give you an update on what they're doing. This is a group of middle school and high school students who meet at least once a month. They work with their building administrators, and then they come here to the Edison Building and hear from the superintendent, from Mr. Ruffin, from Ms. Henry about both school-specific issues and district-wide issues. And they are working every day with students in their building and in different buildings to make this district even better. So, they'll give you an update on the kind of work they're doing.
Other board members? Director Workman.
I'm going to report some on the Legislative Committee. I attended the legislative updates for AMSD, the Association of Metro School Districts, of which we are a member, and MSBA, the Minnesota School Boards Association, this Friday remotely. So, before I start, I'd like to just give a very brief summary of what our legislative priorities are. To stabilize the education funding system and ensure taxpayer equity, focus on tools to transform and innovate schools, innovative funding eligibility mechanism, sustaining PTEC, prioritizing supporting and expanding full-service community school funding, and transforming school-based mental health services. So, I was really delighted to see, well, delighted might be a little strong, to see how our legislative priorities are lining up with what's happening in the legislature. So, the broad goals from the Due North Education Plan from Governor Walz's One Minnesota Budget are: Every student receives a world-class education. Every student learns in a safe and nurturing environment. Every student learns in a classroom with a caring and qualified teacher. Expand access to opportunities for students of color and indigenous students. Expand access to opportunities for students in greater Minnesota. And fund a 21st century education. So, some of the ways that we line up with this are in the 21st century funding category. Funding is, the proposal is to tie it to inflation, to reduce the special education cross subsidy, which is recommended by the governor to be 50% reduction. But I understand there is movement in the legislature, at least in the House, to fund that more and that he is open to that. Fund universal meals. I know Bruce Fuller, that's been one of your huge priorities. So, I'm happy to see that this is really up front in the legislature.
I noticed it also.
Reduce the English learner cross subsidy by over 20%. And district renewal of current voter-approved operating referendum. This would mean that once an operating referendum has been approved, that we would not have to go to the voters every 10 years to ask for something they've already approved to be approved again. So, academic excellence category, birth through grade 12, plan for literacy achievement, Minnesota multi-tiered system of support and collaborative Minnesota partnerships to advance student success, post-secondary enrollment options funding. There's a recommendation for $500 million for a one-time grant, not for just one district, that can be used between 2024 and 2027. And there is a similar recommendation to expand CTEC with $30 million in one-time grants. These dollars would go to the entire state of Minnesota. So, I was really encouraged and excited to see how well our legislative priorities are lining up, not only with what the state's priorities are, but even more importantly, with our strategic plan. Because so much of what is listed in the governor's budget really does relate to the ambitious plan that our superintendent has taken the lead on and helping to develop over the next several years. So, some of the other categories, which aren't part of our legislative priorities, because I have learned that when everything is a priority, nothing is a priority. So, some of those other priorities are reimagining the secondary experience, career readiness, education or workforce, IT collection system, and reporting. So, in the governor's proposed budget, if you want to take a look at it, it is online, these directly line up with our legislative priorities. Budget line three, the general education formula tied to inflation. Line four, which I've already mentioned, the special education cross subsidy reduced by 50%. Line item number nine, the English learner cross subsidy reduction. Twenty-six, line 26, the multi-tiered systems of support. Thirty, career and technical access. And forty-four, community, full-service community schools. In some of my other digging, I realized that our students are really not only dependent on what happens in the Department of Education, but how their lives are impacted and their learning is impacted to what is happening in other agencies of the government. So, in the Health and Human Services Department, suicide and crisis lifeline, community mental well-being, healthy beginnings, healthy families, addressing homelessness for Minnesota adults, youth, and families, mental health crisis in early intervention service expansion, and expediting access to behavioral health services. So, this was like two pages. You're welcome to look it up. I'm sure it would provide a fascinating read for us in the Legislative Committee, for sure, and other interested people. So, we will be meeting again soon to try to keep up with what's happening in the legislature. Everything is moving extremely fast, and it's really a Herculean effort. So, we're happy to have bill trackers from MSBA, from AMSD, and other organizations to help us wade through this.
Director McLaughlin.
I will just take on to that as a member of the Legislative Committee from the, kind of more the advocacy role. I first want to recognize Chair Nathan and thank her for testifying on behalf of the fully-funding education bill that if people, House File 18. If we can keep track of that, and thank you for doing that, I think it's a big step forward in recognizing that having someone from Rochester speak on that topic is very exciting. I also asked the Assistant Board Clerk to add into our administrative content that the MSBA has asked board members to reach out to our local legislators. And I included the information about how to do that. They have a text program this year where you can text, and I have the instructions in Board docs, so we don't have, I don't have to tell you the instructions. You can text through that process and reach your local legislator with support of various bills. The information that I have in Board docs was from January 23rd that got us to our state senators to support that same House File. Actually, it was set at File 28. And I believe last week, they updated that now to reach our House members. So, your local House members will be connected directly from texting to that number. Again, the same instructions, same phone number, it just connects you a different way. But I think this is a very easy and, but important way to keep our legislators informed, not only on the issues that are important to us here from the Rochester Public School District, but also our personal connections with them to encourage them to vote for these bills that are very important, not only for our district, but our students, our families, and our whole state. So, providing easy access to provide that support. And then, the Legislative Committee will continue to advocate and track those bills and provide updates like we have today.
Any other reports from any of the board members? Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that any board member would like to remove for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second? It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Superintendent Fekel, do you have anything from Human Resources section?
I do.
Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is our first focus topic. Item 6.01, the skip update from Dakota Middle School. This is an information item. This is an information item, an item in the continuing series of our school continuous improvement plan presentations. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. As I see our colleagues from Dakota Middle School coming up, I want to thank you in advance for the awesome swag. We got the new logo on a T-shirt that will be proudly, proudly worn. If I have the correct names, we're being joined by Levi Lundak, our principal, Anne Main, instructional coach, Erin Patrick, who's a 7th grade science teacher, and Brianna Cappers, who is an 8th grade science teacher. And if I butchered anybody's name, I really apologize. And everyone always butchers mine, and so it's payback. But I want to thank you for taking the time. We know after a day of teaching and leading, how taxing it can be to come down here, but it is incredibly helpful for us. And clearly, there was, we've got a...
I just happened to join up here and also a school counselor at Dakota, so...
That's awesome. And you remind us of your name, then.
Greg Greenstein.
Okay, fantastic. Thanks for being here. Sorry we don't have the nameplate, but we'll flex. It's great, I'm so glad you're up. Board members know, this is an opportunity for us to dive deep, as Chair Nathan said, into the improvement strategies and the life of our schools, and we are really excited to have a chance to dig into one of our newest schools. And so Levi, take it away.
Well, Chair Nathan, members of the board, Cabinet Dr. Pecel, thank you for having us on our journey through this year, being new. It's been quite eye-opening to us all of what it really takes to, kind of, one of our analogies for the year is getting the plane flying. And sometimes we're working on the plane while it's going on in the air. Everyone up here has heard that multiple times. A little bit about Dakota, and again, just this data dig was interesting because we didn't know coming in what was going to be in the building. So just our demographics a little bit, we have about 8% of our multilanguage learner students. 17% of our students receive special education services. And our demographic breakdown of 51% white, 20% black, 8% Hispanic Latino, 13% Asian, and about 1% American Indian, Alaskan, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander. 7% are identified as multirace. And we came in right around 42% for interviews at lunch. And as you know, we did a significant boundary shift, and that mirrors a lot of, very close to our other standalone middle schools in Kellogg, John Adams, and Willow Creek. If you think about it, we're actually on day 89. Today, we just completed, not even 100 days in the new building. And we're serving 980 students as of February 1st. And think of how everyone came together. It was students that attended four different middle schools last year, five. We actually had some kids come over from Lincoln as well, and from over eight of our elementary schools. Now, the staff in total, if you include all our groups, including the new names of people who serve us, we have over 120, and it came from about 15 different sites and from out of our district as well. So it's been interesting, and we'll get into it with our skip goals specifically, of all these ideas of students, parents, families, community, as well as teachers from different shared experiences coming together to build traditions, thoughts of how we need to work forward, as well as building data sets that reflects the convergence of all these things and how we've chosen to come together and to help us move forward in making the best decisions for everyone. So it's been exciting and scary all at the same time, but we've met every opportunity as an opportunity, not as a challenge, to work with our kids, work with our staff, team and community to help. So I'm going to turn it over to Anne Main, our instructional coach, to talk about goal number one.
Good evening. So our first goal is in the domain of high-quality learning environment for students. And as it says, we want to increase the percentage of students who report they feel valued as members of the school community and have strong relationships with staff, as measured by the Panorama survey, to areas in particular, which we'll get to in a moment. So we're going to highlight three of the levers that we're using to reach this goal. The first is the relationship lever. And so we, as a staff, use common practices such as advisory lessons. All of our advisors teach the same lessons every day, mostly centered around PBIS expectations. We all greet students at the door, learn all of the students' names at the beginning of the year, and periodically, we do community-building activities with our students. And then we also award Bison Bucks daily for our students, which they can redeem at our school. Also, in the relationship lever, we have our equity specialists who work with all of our staff and students and our students' school board group. Our second lever is under formative assessment. We have our support team who reviews grade behavioral data once a week. They determine interventions for those students who are showing high needs. Our grade level teams review that data once a month, and they come together to establish common practices for those students with those higher needs. And then our PD lever, professional development lever. Most of our staff meetings focus on PBIS and behavior strategies. Teachers also get a tune-up from time to time. I think of that as kind of like a booster shot, little tips and tricks to help with maybe something that the data is showing. For example, if the data is showing increased misuse of technology, for example, we might have some tune-ups or boosters around tips and strategies to deal with that.
So when we were looking at data from our panorama, our school came in just a little bit above the district average. And having it be our first year, we were pretty happy with how that came in, especially a group of students that, prior to this year, most of us had never met. So obviously, until all of our numbers are 100%, we have room for growth. But looking at the district average and where we fell, you know, we're feeling like, all right, we've got some good things going here, particularly that 52% of our kids do feel like they belong at school. So that was a really favorable response that we felt pretty nice about. And feeling that other students were showing them respect as well. Those were some really positive highlights for us in that area. And again, here, 81% felt that their teachers were very respectful. Their teacher-student relationships were also above the district average and mostly favorable, feeling very positive in that way. When the teacher asks how they're doing, they actually feel like they want to hear the answer. They do care how they're doing. So would you be excited to have the teacher again? Yeah. So especially considering that we were starting from nothing before this. We're pleased with where we're at, and we're looking forward to going up in the future.
And be responsive to the data we do collect in a timely fashion. We talked about that in one of the first slides, building that robust data package that we're looking at. So even though we were mildly pleased with where these numbers came in, just as our initial baseline, we know there's room for improvement until we do have 100% of students having these feelings. So when we first took a look at these in, I believe, early December, our team said, what can we do now to be adaptive and responsive? Again, that idea of reconfiguring, developing the plane as we're in motion. So for our January staff meeting, maybe it's December, sorry, December staff meeting, we're intentional to help students share their voice more. We brought in a student panel for the staff meeting to share what they thought or how they interpreted some of this information. And behind the scenes, we kind of used some of these questions to have them share just their thoughts of what's going well at Dakota, where we can improve, and that sort of thing. So being responsive to students around our goal has been intentional, even within the staff meetings, focusing on, yes, behavior supports, but let's listen to them on what they think would be better behavior supports for us to meet their challenges.
And then our second goal revolves around the high-quality work environment for staff. Our goal kind of has two parts. One is to create an environment of staff collegiality with common structures and supports for students and staff to facilitate high levels of learning. And then the second goal agrees much like our first, except we switched staff with students, so increase the percentage of staff who feel that they are valued as members of the school community and have strong relationships. And we'll again see panorama data in just a moment. So we're going to focus tonight, talk about our four of the levers that we're using to help us reach this goal. The first is the relationships lever. Like Mr. Lundak just said, yes, we're flying the plane while we're building it, but everything that we do is purposeful. So we do have purposeful planned relationship-building activities. In the summer, we were able to have two full days together. The first was in June. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it at Dakota because it wasn't open yet, but then the second one was at Dakota. And that was a really good opportunity for all of the staff to gather together, get to know each other, did some activities, you know, shared some meals together. We did a couple nuts and bolts things, but it was mostly about us gathering together. We also do weekly staff trivia, because as Mr. Lundak said, we're all coming from all over RPS and beyond, so we want to make sure that we're being playful and getting to know each other. The group learn spaces are often where you'll find PLCs or Teams meeting, and they might be planning or sharing data, or you might just see them just informally gathering before, after, just hanging out and talking about the day. And again, it just feels like a real supportive environment, and you can tell that the staff are building relationships with each other, just by walking through those group learns. Under the PD lever, in January, we completed our first instructional rounds. Teachers visited other classrooms. Most teachers visited classrooms outside their content area, outside their grade level, and typically outside their wing. And in addition to affirming what we do and what others do, we found that it helped us build community by getting into other people's classrooms, some people who we may not have known how to build conversation yet with. Maybe they just, our paths don't cross very much, so that was a nice bonus to instructional rounds. Under the SEL lever, Levi mentioned a little bit before, we were looking to establish traditions at Dakota. Some are brand-new and some are reinvented from our shared history. We're having our inaugural chili cook-off. We're at the Mary and Louie Tonia. We have books for baby Bison, which Mrs. Patrick brought with her. So we pitch in and we buy books for staff members who have babies, which we have ones to buy this year. Donut Club, which was brought by Mr. McMahon from his school, so every week, there's a volunteer with those donuts, and we just, and we eat the donuts. And even instructional rounds can be a tradition because it is not only about learning, but gathering together. We find a lot of people really look forward to the instructional rounds as a way to just get out of their space and see other people. And then finally, our targeted interventions lever. First, your teachers are all assigned a mentor teacher, and those buddy-teacher relationships have also organically developed, either within the grade level or in the content, or even in just the wing of the school. For example, several of our 6th grade teachers have come from an elementary setting, and our 6th grade veteran teachers who have come from middle school have really helped to get the acclimated to what middle school looks like. We see buddy teacher check-ins like that frequently, also leads checking in for some of our non-teachers out.
And one of the big keys around the sense of belonging, part of why we chose it, was something that we could intentionally work on for the staff belonging together, but also to build collective teacher efficacy. Those that know the work of Hattie, they know one of the biggest things that moves student learning is collective teacher efficacy within building a team. So we thought that was going to be very integral for us to have that built together as that team to help us move the student learning forward.
Good evening. So our data in terms of our goals for our staff, we are pretty on par with the district. And I like to try to remember that this was taken in October, and, you know, teachers and students were, we were just getting started, right? So we're right on par with the rest of the district. Our Dakota staff being a little bit lower than the Dakota teachers. And then to go into that more deeply, the first two really deal with how we understand each other and our relationships with each other. And, you know, logically, in October, most of us did not know each other very well, so it's understandable that those numbers are lower at 50%, you know, in the 50s. And I would expect that, you know, we keep our staff, that that's going to increase because we've really, after things have slowed down at the start of the year, things have slowed down now, we're in a routine, we're really starting to get to know each other. You know, I could go from naming the amount of teachers I knew in the school on one hand to now I could probably name most of them, you know, just since October, so. And then the bottom three questions, like how much respect colleagues in your school show you, we have very high rating on that, especially considering the time it was taken. And I think that comes from, you know, as a personal note, I think that comes from our administration really showing value towards us, that we knew that we were valued going in, we knew that we were part of the plane. We weren't just passengers, we were expected to all pitch in and help this thing fly. So definitely respect for each other. And then how much we matter and how much we belong. We feel like we are Bison. I would, you know, speak for myself and the other teachers that I am close with, and that we feel like we are a part of the school, we're an important part of the school. And, you know, the staff numbers are slightly, for the most part, slightly lower than the Dakota teachers' numbers, which is something we noticed at our staff meeting in December, January. That one was in January. And so we were talking about how, why, or how can we make them feel more included as part of our school, an equally important part of our school, especially our ESPs and our lunch staff. So that's a point to work towards is, how can we make all staff feel the same way that the teachers?
And again, in being adaptable, especially for our ESP team, once we saw those numbers were lower than our teaching staff, we implemented a series of opportunities for them to share with our admin team and teachers and partnering. A lot of our ESPs come from the Special Education Department, so we bring in some of our specialized coaches or building leaders in that department, give them more agency and opportunity to share and find out what's going on, hear from them, and implement some of the great ideas they have from being so directly connected to kids in the classroom. And that's part of one of our, again, action steps of what to do next, because we, being new and having to guess at a lot of things coming here, we've got to be adaptable and make it happen, we can't just wait for next year. So hence, in January, we started some of those meetings to hear their voices, get their ideas, and kind of help work on making sure they're a part of our team because they are so integral to the success of all our students. February, we're meeting with our MML, our multilanguage learning staff, because typically in the student responses in panorama, we noticed our ML students were scored light. That was a subset that was typically lower than others. So we want to find out more information from them and their teachers and see what we can do to make them feel more inclusive and belonging at our schools. Then obviously, just listening sessions with the staff, students, we try and be out present and just hear, validate both staff, students, parents, and just trying to help our community be the best new school we can be. And, you know, we're going to make a lot of mistakes around the way, but we're not so tied to a tradition that's been there for years that we can't change it to make it better. So that's kind of our goal in moving forward.
Questions for us? Board members? Director Barlow?
Well, I was there for the ribbon-cutting ceremony, and there was a great deal of excitement as to what Dakota would look like. And there were a number of challenges that you didn't shy away from, but you faced head on. And it's exciting to me now, as a board member, to hear the solutions that you guys have implemented. I'd like to just draw attention to a few of them. Goal one, the student sense of belonging. During this past campaign season, I was on campaigning, but several of the board members were, the question of student belonging oftentimes was a discussion point, you know, what's the big deal? And as I listen to you report out and share the importance of it, it is a big deal. Okay, the big deal is students need to feel as if they belong. And not just feel it, but know it. And that's what I sense you guys have done. You are providing for many of those students that confidence that they belong, that Dakota is the right place for them, and you guys are the right staff and teaching professionals for them as well. So I wanted to commend you in how you operationalized... So I wanted to commend you in how you operationalized that sense of belonging and use the term adaptive responsive, adaptive responsivenessness. I think that's very important, including the student voice. You know, students are always saying, you know, whether quit running, don't do this, but you're hearing them, and that is so important. You know, as a board member, I think it's important for you to receive feedback from, well, the board that you guys have done the right thing. I'm sure the principal, Levi, shares that with you all the time, and chief of schools and other people do as well. But as a member of the board, I really want you to know that you're making a difference. And then finally, the action steps that you, the four, that you, three that you identified, the intentionality of reaching out to the MLL students. You know, rather than making assumptions, well, you know, they this, or they that, you're actually taking the time to ask. Is it a language thing? Is it a, you know, something that we can maybe address that can better help you navigate and participate? So just no real questions, just a lot of thank you. So keep up the good work, and I like the shirt as well.
Well, I'll pipe in. A lot of people can talk about how middle school can be difficult. And I attended three different middle schools in three different years. I was in the situation many people, many students at Dakota were because in sixth grade, they built a new middle school in my town. And we were the ones that were asked to move to a new middle school with new friends from new parts of town that we didn't know before. So I know how important it is that welcoming and that belonging. If they hadn't done as good of a job like you are doing, I don't think I would have felt that middle school was, was a good time for me. And then we moved to another state and I had to start all over in the middle school. So I know how difficult it can be for our, our young people to start over in a new community. But I've appreciated hearing from you, the intentionality. I mean, you can see it in your, in your colleagues supporting each other. That Director Barlow was right, that day of the ribbon cutting, even though it was the beginning, it felt like the plane was already in the air and you all, you all were, were taking us somewhere. So I appreciate the, the focus on what you're learning from your data, even though it's baseline data. Good people doing good work. And thank you for coming here tonight and sharing it with us. And we look forward to hearing more as you continue to fly.
We are a couple of months from receiving a review from the University of Minnesota of the degree to which we have in our district, what's called multi-tiered system of supports. So kids who are struggling, first academically, but also can happen in other areas. There is no surprise to anybody that we've got some work to do, like most school districts in that space. So I just was inviting total candor, because I love how your whole presentation was, we're proud of our school, we can do better. Like, I think that's just the ethos. If you were going to name, and just individually, I know you didn't, this question's coming out of the blue, so you don't have to like look at Mr. Lundak and see. What is a type of support that you'd like to see enhanced for students? Doesn't mean it's non-existent at Dakota. But what's a support where you're saying, okay, if we're really going to have multi tiers of support, boy, I'd like to see this in place? Because this is going to be a critical discussion for us. Yeah, please.
I came from John Adams. And I was very surprised when I started Dakota, the lack of support our administration had. Not from, from you or from the community, but they didn't have any backup. They didn't have a behavior specialist. We didn't have a success coach. Are there any other ones that?
Minority liaison, like, yeah.
Right, we had an equity specialist, but not a minority liaison. Like, we, Bree and I were used to at John Adams. And our administration is, is doing fabulous. And, but they, I, I'm afraid of burnout if they don't also have support to alleviate some of the things that they have to deal with on a daily basis. That could be assisted in other ways. And connections for the students in more ways than just the administration and teachers, having supports for the students or bridges between the students and the teachers. You know, adults that can be that bridge. We're lacking that. We have a little bit now with our resiliency specialists that we hired, which is, I think, a step in the right direction. But that is definitely a support that I would like to see enhanced.
And that's something that, you know, would have been nice to have, like, in the beginning, to help with that transition in the beginning, especially with some of our students who had a challenge with that. I think another thing that would be helpful is more academic supports for those kids who don't quite qualify for special education services or multilingual services, but they're not at grade level either. And at this point, we don't have intervention specialists or people available to really get what we need for them. And if we have, you know, more people, more, to, to really help these kids, to, you know, get them where they need to be so that they can be in class and feel like, I belong here because I, not because my teachers want me here, because I think that for the most part, you know, most of our kids are feeling like, okay, you're happy that I'm here and that's great. But I belong here because I, I can do what we're doing.
Yeah, thank you. I know, I don't know if there's others, but it's a deep question. We're in the beginning stages of it. If there's other thoughts, I want to mind the chair, I'll keep you talking about this one all day.
Yeah, go ahead, someone's leaning in.
Yeah, I guess first shout out to the school council, you back there for National School Council, Lee. One of the things that I've noticed is, more from the mental health and school council perspective, is the idea of psychological safety classroom and continuing to develop that and with your professional development for further staffing of that as well. Given the amount of students that are seeing professionals around mental health, it is sort of, in that, it's very, it's huge. And we're just figuring out how to empower teachers and empower staff to feel like they have the tools at their disposal to create that environment in classrooms, a psychological safety of understanding of trauma that students have been through and what they're going to score from every day. Not only to help them feel more loved and belonging to the school, but just to help them feel, if you could say, environment that I can get home. And really focus on the academics, not having to worry about everything that's going on at home, like everything that they've experienced over the past, people that are aware of rapid change that we've seen with that. So just helping teachers understand and giving the tool of psychological safety classroom to be able to handle all of that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you for your work. And our second focus topic tonight is item 6.02, student advancement. This is also an information item. Board members might remember that when we were developing the annual school board calendar, that we asked for various topics to be brought before the board to give us updates on programs or departments. And tonight, it's student advancement. Superintendent Pecal?
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and board members. It's exciting to welcome Laura Willis, who is leading our work on student advancement and instructional technology. We're mostly going to focus on the first part of that title. We talked earlier in the meeting about the importance of names. This is work that is more traditionally referred to as gifted and talented education in many places. I will say that when I first began discussions with Laura, as she also stepped into an airplane that was not built in this new position as part of our reorganization this summer, I shared that I have long deeply struggled with the term gifted and talented, not just because of the message it sends to kids in the classroom who are not so designated. Because I think we all know, all students have gifts and talent. But candidly, also for the students who are identified as such and may think that my giftedness just allows me to be born on third base and think I hit a triple. And that in fact, all of us have the need to continually develop and work. And so I'm excited that we're referring to the work, as you're, you're going to see, through the lens of advancement. Student advancement is a little vague yet, but we're going to keep working on the title. But it's an effort to, we believe in the programming, as you're going to hear. We want to get the terminology right. And I know Laura's going to give us a glimpse of how the field itself is also thinking in those terms. So thank you for a pretty blistering first number of months in the job. And this is going to be great to give the board and the community an update.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Superintendent Pecal, directors, and cabinet, it's my pleasure to be here to give you an update on student advancement. I want to start by inviting you to participate in a thinking challenge. We believe that all students learn at high levels. And that is why every first and second grader in RPS receives lessons to help them develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills delivered by the elementary gate specialists. This example comes from the first grade primary education thinking skills curriculum. I'm going to give you a moment to read through this first grade challenge. Does anyone have a solution or a comment about this challenge?
I have a question. How many ladybugs are there to begin with? Start off. Yeah, but it says.
Five ladybugs. It's not as easy. Just showing the level of thinking that six-year-olds can do. And we're in the business of differentiating, so I'll circle back because I know you need more time.
Thank you.
The topics we're going to cover tonight are who are advanced learners and how does RPS identify them? How are advanced learners currently being served? And what are goals for increasing access to advanced academics and integrating deeper learning into all classrooms? According to the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act, advanced learners are students, children, or youth who give evidence of high achievement capability in areas such as intellectual, creative, artistic, or leadership capacity, or in specific academic fields, and who need services and activities not ordinarily provided by the school in order to fully develop those capabilities. All students are unique and deserve to have their learning needs met in school, whether they're below grade level, at grade level, or are ready for accelerated content. Asynchronous development is a common characteristic of advanced learners that describes the variation across developmental areas. If you take a look at this graphic, the student is represented by that black ring, the chronological age. This particular student has advanced ability in verbal and math and a special talent. But notice, not all of them are at the same level. This mismatch can create cognitive and/or social-emotional challenges for students. A false assumption about advanced learners is that they will succeed no matter what. But without challenging curriculum at their level, these students can become disengaged and frustrated, sitting in classrooms where they've already mastered the material. They may lose interest in school and might even underachieve. This slide shows the demographics of students in grades three through five identified for RPS advanced services. On the left is the percent of students currently in advanced services, and the right is the percent of total district population, with the right, far right being the percent difference. And we have some work to do in this area. We are currently identifying students right now for this school year. This is the number of advanced students in grades three through five by race and ethnicity for the last couple of years. Some areas to note here are that the 20%, the decrease represents one student. The number of Hispanic students doubled, and the number of Black students almost tripled. A natural question here is, why? Rochester uses evidence-based practices for identification. Something we do is universal screening. Every second grader and fourth grader gets tested with the cognitive abilities test. So rather than relying on teacher nominations or parent requests, every student gets screened. Besides the COGAT, we use the FAST bridge, student portfolios, which are open-ended and allow students to shine in diverse ways, and self-selection. The most recent addition is the use of local or school-based norms, which has had an impact on racial equity in advanced programs. And finally, we use multiple entry points. Scores are reviewed periodically, and we give students additional opportunities to qualify. Here are some enrichment and advancement opportunities we are currently using. Besides early entrance to kindergarten, grade, and subject acceleration, all first and second grade students receive thinking skills. There are pull-out classes for identified third through fifth graders, both verbal and nonverbal. And over 3,800 elementary students receive advanced academic services via PETS, verbal, or nonverbal classes. We've done a lot of work at the middle school level this year. There's RAMP, which is Rochester Accelerated Math Program. Students can self-select single acceleration in sixth grade. We've expanded the honors option, exposing all students to high-quality rigorous curriculum. So any student in grades seven and eight can take an honors option for English, social studies, or science. And the highly gifted program is at four middle schools, where we compact the curriculum in English, social studies, and science. We've provided time for middle school educators to collaborate with one another and their coaches to learn differentiation strategies, the concept of teaching up, and how to foster sinking classrooms. And over this past two weeks, last week and this week, we'll have 50 middle school teachers joining us for professional development. Here's a list of some options that high school students have. And at this level, it is self-selected. Research shows that educational experiences that are active, social, contextual, engaging, and student-owned lead to deeper learning. Here's a great example of an authentic student-owned, deeper learning experience. Mr. Neber's fifth grade gate class partnered with Sweet House Bakery to provide the students an opportunity to create their own donut flavors, pitch their ideas to persuade the audience to vote for their flavor. And Sweet House Bakery sold these in their shop. The winning flavors were Cookie Explosion and The Masterpiece. And you better believe chocolate was in both. So why do we need to reexamine our current practices? We have identification gaps between the current advanced learner enrollment and the district demographics. We want to ensure early access to rigorous curriculum. We need to develop teacher capacity to match instruction to student needs within the classroom. And we want to ensure students from all backgrounds experience advanced thinking skills and deeper learning opportunities to support their academic success and fully develop their potential. There's a shift in gifted education. We are moving away from the historical concept of giftedness with inequitable access and barriers. And we're moving toward matching the students' needs with their instructional environment, whether that means increasing the pace, or adjusting the depth, complexity, or having a different content altogether. We're moving towards all students of all ages have relative talents and strengths that can be nurtured at school and recognizing and eliminating the barriers that exist within gifted education. So some of the goals are to create school programs and services that are tailored and responsive to the needs, to the student needs at each school. And a key area of this would be building staff capacity to not only recognize the unique cognitive and social-emotional needs of advanced learners, but to design and integrate deeper learning practices into all classrooms so that meeting the needs of advanced learners is not. is not an isolated island. We know that advanced learners aren't advanced 30 minutes twice a week. So providing classrooms where differentiated material is there benefits all students. And finally, as Superintendent Pecal said, names matter. So we need to really examine the names that we give to the programs to make sure that they align with the responsive and inclusive nature of future programming. The names should be representative of growth and development. Next steps: continue to review how to increase access to advanced academics and deeper learning opportunities to encourage creative problem solvers who will positively impact their communities. And finally, gather a group of diverse parents, community members, students, educators, and administrators to examine possibilities for future services to meet the needs of advanced learners. And now it is time for the answer to our ladybug question. Thank you.
I have a question. So, for those of us who got it correct, which is of course everyone, we can now say that we are as smart as a first grader.
Right.
That's encouraging. Thank you. That was a great exercise, by the way.
Director Cook.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. The advanced, or the student advancement opportunities or accelerated opportunities are incredibly important for our students. I recognize that as a parent, that, you know, students all come in with different needs and different ways to be challenged. I wanted to go back to the identification criteria that you were talking about and the pretty significant change from just over the past year in what that identification process, what student population that identification process yielded. And the one I didn't recognize, there was the local and school-based norms. Is that a new process for identifying students? And could you say a little bit more about it?
Yes, over the last several years. So that is where we compare students with other students at their grade level, at their site. So then, rather than taking this student and comparing it with the national norm, we're looking really locally at that school and deciding, does this student, could this student benefit from additional academic challenge? So in some of the assessments, we definitely can screen and see strengths with some students, and others just aren't, don't identify or uncover the strengths through traditional methods. So offering the portfolio, which is another option, open-ended responses, student get, they get four prompts where they can respond in their own language through writing, drawing, and show us more of what they're thinking creatively.
For the school-based norms, what is it, is it the, or is that comparison being made on the universal screening tools, the COGAT scores, or is it some other measure at the local level?
On the COGAT score.
Okay, got it.
So we typically will look at the top 52% of the COGAT.
Oh, okay. Excellent. Well, thank you.
Director Garcia.
I wanted to talk about the moving forward piece, because I actually was in gifted programming in my school in Arizona. And I felt like even at that time, when it was, you know, you took either an exam, Stanford Bynae, WISCon, something, or it wasn't WISCon at the time, but a Wexler intelligence test, and there was an interview. And then when you showed up and you were accepted, the way that they structured the programming felt very much like there was a baseline of things that they wanted us to learn. So we did like SAT, word, like vocabulary, and all kinds of things. And we played stocks and bonds as games. It's so boring. But then there were aspects of it where it was like, we were getting plucked out of a classroom to go somewhere else for a few hours, where in some ways it was like, okay, now I'm with like a group of my peers, but I thought like, why couldn't I just have this in my own classroom? Like, why couldn't there just be like the honors version of me being in a class where like I have to do this extra step? And so I feel like the, like in moving forward and doing something more like the instructional environment matching the needs of the student just makes so much more sense to me. And I know someone started to talk about this, and we were talking about, you know, how we structure education, and it's interesting that we do it by age when that really isn't an indicator of your intelligence. So like, if I'm at what we would consider a third-grade-level math, like why wouldn't I, no matter what age I am, be with kids that are learning at that same rate or speed? And so I feel like this is getting closer to something that is more accessible to students, and I think it would be maybe easier for teachers to figure out, like, how do you, how do you balance the needs of all the students in the group where there's like a base level of learning, and then you can add on to that for kids that need a little bit more acceleration? Or there's something, it's like tailored to individual students, rather than just siphoning or, you know, siloing them into some other space. So I really appreciate that that, that that is happening, and it's not creating even the, let's see this, like, I felt uncomfortable when I would have to leave class to go to this group, just like I knew some of the other special education students felt embarrassed when they had to leave class to go to their special room. And so I feel like this is just more like, you're able to be with who you need to be with in class and receive the education that you want to need in that moment, regardless of your test scores. So, thank you.
Director Marv.
It seems to me that back in the day, when you were the gifted teacher, the training you got was teach more and faster. And I'm just wondering, today and going forward, how are we going to train teachers, all teachers, not just the teachers who will experience the accelerated kids, because we assume that they're gonna be in everybody's classroom? It seems to me that the deeper learning that this district is really investing is exactly the kind of training that all teachers need, and that it might prepare them better to work with a real variety of students and different kinds of learners. Is there a plan to do more teacher training so that they're specifically aware of different kinds of gifts, different kinds of abilities in different students, and how to sort of connect?
That is one of the things that we will have to discuss. But this year, with all of the work that we've done at the middle school level, so one of the things that is really important is it's not more, it is different. And also separating ability versus achievement. So achievement is largely based on privilege, access, and exposure to content. And ability is what we test with the COGAT. We have to have both pictures of a student, because there are students that aren't proficient in math but have an extremely high COGAT. If we know that about that student, we just need to expose them to this math curriculum, and they can move at a faster rate, we can accelerate their learning. The other thing to think about is, being an advanced learner is a multi-dimensional construct that isn't easily identified or measured by a single score. So looking at these students holistically, looking at that asynchronous development, their social-emotional needs, they might need math, but they don't need English. So that historical concept of giftedness, where you're gifted in perpetuity in every area at this level, it, we really need to look at the flexibility of when the student needs it, and matching the instruction and the environment to the student need. And that's fluid for every student. So when we talk with the middle school teachers, and we have this professional development, it's really understanding there are multiple dimensions of students, and there are six profiles of advanced learners. How do we recognize them? And maybe the behavior in your classroom is a result of not matching that instruction that they need. So, you're right, those are all excellent questions and things that we need to talk about, and we'll have to plan how that's going to work in the future.
Director McLaughlin.
So I have, you answered one of my questions about deeper and not just more. My experience when I was teaching high school, both with my students that I taught and with my own kids, was that an advanced class or the honors option meant, you're just gonna get more homework, and it's the same. So I really like the emphasis on the deeper part. I think that's really critical. Then the second question, or that was a comment. The second question I have is, I think the term in gifted educational, in gifted education was twice exceptional. So you're dealing with a student who is really, has a lot of ability to excel academically, but they also have a challenge, such as maybe they're dyslexic, or they have ADHD. So will there be instruction to teachers in terms of, how do you balance that out? And how do they know if a student is twice exceptional? You know, rather than saying, you're really smart. Now, if you would just sit down and do your work, you know, to somebody who has ADHD, I'm hoping that's not happening. But you see where I'm going with that.
And that's one of the six profiles that we look at, really understanding the student, what they need socially-emotionally, what they need behaviorally, what they need academically. And so that was a part of our staff development as well. And I think you were mentioning something earlier about just understanding the needs of students, and it's not just about the academics and going harder and faster and more. It's really, what does the student need?
Director Marv.
I like the new name, I mean, still to be ultimately determined, but Student Advancement. I was encouraged to see the trend data, and focusing on white students where there's a, only a 30% increase. Should parents of white students feel that, oh, because these other, you know, groups are doing so much better now, that means we're getting less? I guess I want you to clarify that. I don't believe on any level that it means that, but perhaps just in looking at numbers, because many tend to just look at the numbers and the percentages, and you want to celebrate. Are we still winning? But in this instance, just to be sure that that is not the case, I think the trend data, the use of the evidence-based identification is hugely important, because as you've already said, I don't need to repeat what you've already said, but I appreciate the fact that it is a more universal approach and strategy that allows more students to be properly challenged and to become effective learners. For me, it was always less about the designation, though I think some parents derive, oh yeah, my kids are in gifted talent. I mean, that's how we as parents are, right? We like to be able to do that, but, but I'm so impressed by this. Superintendent Pecal, you know, thank you for reorganizing as you have and continue to, and to allow student advancement to currently exist as it is, does, and we will, I'm sure, see more good work coming forth. So thank you, Laura.
Director McLaughlin. I also appreciate the work that you're doing, and I guess I, maybe I should have gone first, that I didn't say anything in here about what, I can see that you're passionate about this topic, but what brings you to this work, what brings you to this role? If you can give us a little bit of background for some context. And then also, I would ask you to expand a little bit on, one of the slides talks about one of the things that provides evidence of high achievement capability is the leadership capacity. Is that something that we're looking at in our district?
What brings me to this role is I was an instructional coach at Fred Allen Middle School, and they were the first building to have the highly gifted program. So I really learned a lot about twice-exceptional students, and about maybe the needs of all students, and I have a real passion for equity and really helping all students reach their full potential. So that's really where my heart is.
And I can see that demonstrated in this work, so thank you.
And building staff capacity, that's part of what we've started this year with the middle school group, and hopefully we can expand that to educate all of the teachers about how to meet the needs of students. Differentiation is very hard, and I do want to just acknowledge that I stepped into this role, but there was a lot of work that was done previously with my predecessor and an amazing team. So I am coming and sharing the work that they have obviously been a part of for years. So I want to acknowledge them and their work.
Can you speak about the leadership capacity? Is that something that you're looking at in the district for students who might demonstrate that as a capability that is unique to them?
Say that again.
It's on, it's on the slide from the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. I'm just curious to know if that's something that you're looking at.
Oh, the leadership capacity, okay.
In the students.
Right now, we are identifying and assessing our methods, primarily our verbal and nonverbal. So we look at reading and math scores. But whatever we assess, or whatever services that we create, we'd have to figure out how we assess and nurture those skills. So currently, that is not a part of what we are doing right now, but that could be something that we could be looking at, is building that leadership capacity in students.
And I kind of bring it from the perspective of, there might be students who don't necessarily, haven't been either exposed to that academic level yet, but might have those leadership skills in a third grader that we want to highlight so that then they can get that academic exposure as well.
And that's part of the reason why we do the PETS curriculum, is all first and second graders get those thinking skills, because we believe that we're focusing early on building that academic potential, will make it more likely that they will be able to do increasingly harder levels of challenge, or maybe select honors or AP in the future.
Awesome. Thank you. Director Garcia.
Yeah, I just had a clarifying question. I know you talked about equity and the assessment, and I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit more to that. And I think specifically what I'm looking for is, when you're using an assessment that is not normed for a particular student's presentation, so if they're multilingual, if it's not, you know, culturally normed for them, how are, how are we, I guess, as the district, testing the limits in that capacity? If we are, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the areas that we are really looking into, even this last year, this fall, just even translating the portfolios into Spanish. When we look at student COGATS, then also examining VIDA scores as well right along with that. So that is something that we're still in the process of looking at, but that is on our radar.
It's hard to do that in a assessment. So I was just, I'm thinking, we have like a multilingual powerhouse, like are we collaborating to make sure that some of those assess? Like the way that it's, the way that it's.
We are.
That's why they're all in the office. They mix together.
Well, Laura and I had a conversation before the meeting, and the chart about the asynchronous development, I was mentioning to her that when my son was in second grade, he would be that chart, and this year he's graduating college. And I give a lot of credit to the services, the groundwork that you talked about that has been happening in the district all these years, to provide with opportunities to just grow all of the students like that in these areas. Having been on the, what used to be the Gifted Services Advisor Committee, and we talked about for years about this new ways of identifying, to make sure that we are capturing all students across the entire spectrum. So to see that the development over the years has just been, has just been great, and that the plan going forward is really focused in best practices in the field. And I love how it's tied to deeper learning. Did you plan that?
Just happened.
Just happened. So, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Any other questions, board members? We look forward to hearing more. And as I mentioned, we are gonna take a recess. It is 7:10 PM. Ten minutes. 10 minutes. This board meeting is back in session at 7:22 PM. Our next agenda item is 7.01, February 2, 2022, Policy Committee Recommendations. This is a briefing item, which is the first briefing for the policies from the February 2 Policy Committee meeting. I want to welcome Dr. Garcia, who attended her first policy committee meeting and survived, although don't ask her how she felt about it. And she's going to join us as we provide a summary of the recommendations. I'll start with Policy 103, Complaints, Students, Employees, Parents, Guardians, Other Persons. The purpose of this policy is to provide an avenue for formal complaints, and we updated it to add detailed language from MSBA. Policy 201, Legal Status of the School Board. The purpose of this policy is to define the statutory and constitutional authority, duties, and powers of the school board. Language was added to set a regular date for annual board compensation review.
Policy 209, Code of Ethics. The purpose of this policy is to assist individual school board members in understanding their role as part of a school board and in recognizing the contribution that each member must make to develop an effective and responsible school board. It was updated to add MSBA model policy language, and it's also one of our policies that is reviewed annually.
Policy 405, Veterans' Preference Hiring. The purpose of this policy is to comply with Minnesota Veterans' Preference Act. Section 2.C.3 was changed to reflect MSBA model policy. And for Policy 420, Students and Employees with Sexually Transmitted Infections and Diseases and Certain Other Communicable Diseases and Infectious Conditions, there was no change, oh, I'm sorry, there are no MSBA changes to this policy. This was a three-year review.
Board members, any questions at this time? We'll have one more briefing, and then it will be on the consent agenda, so two subsequent meetings if you have any questions in the future. Our next item is an action item, Item 8.01, Approval of Overall Budget Strategies Including Budget Reductions. I will read the resolution, ask for a motion and second, and if received, I'll open the floor for questions and discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve reductions in spending in the aggregate amount of $14 million in the preparation of the 2023-2024 school year budget. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the use of $7.4 million in federal COVID-19 funding to maintain critical services to students during and following the pandemic. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the use of up to .2 million of the district's unassigned fund balance. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the delay of transfer of .8 million into the OPEB Health Insurance Savings Account. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the delay of transfer of 1.2 million into the GASPY-16 Unused Sick-Time Severance Savings Account. Do we have a motion?
Move it through.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Superintendent McCall.
Thank you, Chair Nathan and Directors of the Board. Before I turn it over to Chief Administrator Officer John Carlson, I want to make a few general comments, both for the board and those who are here and also those who are out there watching in the world of YouTube. I know some of them are watching because I've even gotten a few emails during this meeting from some of our colleagues. Hi to Jake Johnson, if you're still out there watching tonight. First of all, it's important to remember, we are asking the board to approve parameters, not specific reductions. And the reason, like last year, that I am asking the board to approve those parameters is because then you're giving us our marching orders to do the really critical work of identifying the specific reductions within those parameters. There are two reasons why we are not asking you to approve a specific reduction tonight. First, literally tomorrow, we will start the detailed work within the parameters, if you approve them tonight, of working with administrators of all of our budgets, in schools and departments, on the specific implications that those parameters have for their budgets. And inevitably, issues will arise from those conversations that will cause some adjustments in certain places to what those recommendations are. So that's reason number one, that this recommendation is for parameters and then the impact statements we've given are general. The second reason is we don't want people finding out, either from our fine local press or YouTube, about their job status. And so it is also general because we want to handle difficult issues like this in the most humane way possible. And so we're asking for parameters tonight, and then in the end, of course, the board votes in June on what really will be the budget of record. Second point, to state the obvious, this is tremendously difficult for all of us. None of us want to be in this place. None of us think that this is a somehow productive, painful, but somehow enlightening exercise. This is something that none of us would choose. It is something that is the result of a series of complex chapters, and as multiple board members pointed out tonight, two of them really lie beyond this district. And we join other educators and districts in asking our state to address them. And the first is funding the general formula according to inflation. Every other public agency, every other corporation factors inflation into its forecasting and budgeting. And the nonsensical notion that K-12 education can do that and actually improve is absurd. And so we are continuing to hope that meaningful prudent increases for inflation will be built into future state budgets. And the second is the fact that the mandatory services that we are privileged to provide to our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners are underfunded below the mandate. So those are two critical reasons for this shortfall, but one that this board, I think admirably, has also faced is we have had, in Rochester Public Schools, a growth in staff that has significantly exceeded our growth in student enrollment. And that is something that I know John will remind us of briefly, but I think it's a point that we have made. That is something that school districts ignore at their peril. If you ignore it, you'll first of all quickly spend down your fund balance, which this board has carefully stewarded, because things like pandemics and recessions happen, and we need to have those dollars for a rainy day. Eventually, if you continue to ignore the imbalance between your expenses, which in a school district are mostly staff, and your revenue from enrollment, you'll be cutting programs. And not insignificantly, you will not be able to compensate our employees in terms of salary and benefits at the levels they deserve, because rather than being able to pay individual employees at those levels, we're spreading the scarce dollars out over a larger base. Final point, and I make this comparison hesitantly for two reasons. One, because I don't intend it as a scare tactic. And two, because there's a lot of very good people in the district I'm going to mention. But many of you will remember that last fall, the John Carlson of Minneapolis Public Schools, Ibrahim Diop, who is a very talented professional, issued a memo to their interim superintendent, Rochelle Cox, who is a proud Rochester Public Schools grad, saying that he quote, "anticipates fully depleting the general fund balance during the 24-25 school year and quickly descending into statutory operating debt." That is in our state's school district number one. And I do not want to suggest that that is a simple story. Minneapolis Public Schools is very different than Rochester Public Schools. But the fundamental driver in Minneapolis is the number of their students has become disconnected from their expenses. And that's not coming from me, it's coming from Ibrahim and something that they have been admirably transparent about. We are nowhere close to that level of concern, but when you kick the can down the road, that is ultimately where it potentially can lead. And so that is why we have put forward a multi-year plan that we are asking you, or I am asking you, to take the next step with tonight, understanding that board members have already asked very hard questions. You will You will continue to ask hard questions over the next four months, and we will bring you the best, most educationally sound, compassionate proposal we can in June. So with that, I'll turn it over to John, who will review where we are and then obviously open it up for your questions, building on the very good study session we had about this two weeks ago.
Very good. Thank you, Superintendent Pecal, Chair Nathan, and board members. I am just going to put up that chart to show you. It has resonated with a lot of our employees who have written to us over the last couple of weeks, that our staff has grown 26.8% over the last decade or so, and our student growth is about 7.3% overall. That's not sustainable. One of our peers in the Big Nine showed me this graph for their district a couple of years ago, and it was not that far apart. And they were -- had legitimate concerns that they could not afford to keep operating the way they were operating, and their percentages were only, like I said, maybe two to three points apart. I don't want to sit here and say, why did this happen and all that? But what's good is that Superintendent Pecal and others have come in, and we've been bending that curve. You can see that if we had let it go, it probably would have grown a little bit more, and we intentionally did not do that, and we're intentionally not going to do that again. People have asked me, well, where did all the jobs come from? Where did the 26.8% growth, 565 additional positions over the last decade? And you can see just by job group, I know it's very small print, we've put a larger chart in board docs per Chair Nathan's request, kind of showing year by year by year how it was changing. But you can see, there have been some groups, like administrators, cabinet, clerical, that are actually smaller than they were a decade ago, but there has been significant growth in other job categories. So the resolution tonight says, we would like you to approve a $14 million reduction in anticipated spending. We went through many of the ways we would do that at the study session last time we were together. It's not pleasant to do this. I think we, as Superintendent said, we've heard our share of concern over the last couple of weeks, and we pause and we ponder those, and it's not going to be an easy time to go through the staffing process over the next couple of weeks. But I do firmly believe that taking that amount of expense out of the budget will set us up a lot better for the long haul. We are asking to approve using federal COVID funds to sustain services that are ongoing. Those funds do run out, and that's another reason why the reduction of $14 million is being proposed, is so that we start to wind down our federal spending, because that money is going to end, and you've probably heard the fiscal cliff that's coming in education. It's being talked about all over the country, and we kind of want to get ahead of that so that we don't fall off of it in the 2024 calendar year. This budget proposal that we forecast would put us very close to balance, but we do believe there'd be a small draw from the unassigned fund balance, not very significant, about $200,000. And then we would continue to delay transferring some money into some other savings accounts. These aren't going to affect our current retirees or anybody that's upcoming to retirement. We're just, we're trying to fund those accounts so that, for the long haul, we have a sustainable plan built up for retirees in the future. We'll just delay that, and hopefully we can catch up in the future. So the timeline from here, Superintendent said, is we are going to be going into staffing meetings. We'll be releasing all the staffing budget sheets probably as early as tomorrow, if there are no significant changes here tonight. That'll give our leaders a couple of weeks to get prepared and planned for their upcoming staffing meetings with various leaders in our organization. We will be delivering displacement and unrequestive leave notices to employees. There will be various dates that we're going to release those. We are going to work on then preparing the written budget document for you in the months of March and April. We are still trying to think through what our public comment and feedback opportunity will be. Superintendent and I discussed a little bit this morning that, you know, maybe we should have some sort of online forum or some kind of in-person forum, maybe, where we collect some feedback so that we can make sure that we're hearing from our constituents on how they are viewing our budget proposal. We will bring you the written budget and present that to you on May 30th in a study session, and then, as it's kind of laid out, we will ask for approval of the budget on June 20th.
Board members, any questions? Director Cook.
Yeah, so one of the areas that I am concerned about is, and I understand that while the -- what we are being asked to do as a board is approve the budget parameters, essentially the top line number, and that the specific reductions are what the administration would then be working through over the next few months, as you've laid out here. But because the budget reduction memo that you prepared, Superintendent mentioned adjusting the assignment of special education teachers, I'm looking for some insight on the analysis that went into that, on how it is that the district feels comfortable that all IEPs will be satisfied and that all direct and indirect service minutes will be available with the special education staff following that adjustment. And I don't need, like, the precise minutes or anything, I just am hoping to learn a little bit about how that was analyzed.
Thank you, Director Cook. It remains a work in progress. In fact, our special education director spent nine hours today with our Director of Finance, Andy Croxstedt, down in the basement, going over the beginnings of those particulars. Meeting the requirements of our individualized education plans is unquestioned commitment. It's, we will do that. We not only are bound to do it, we insist that we do it. And we also will be looking at not just minutes of service, but other components of both legal and best practice requirements. And so those will be baseline, and we will be able to provide you, by the end of the process John outlined, still general, meaning not this program in this school, but more specific impact statements by the time we're asking you to vote on the budget. And I've heard that concern from you and other board members in recent weeks, I share it, and so we will be taking those commitments really seriously, and we'll bring you more detailed analysis once we go through these next step discussions at the building level, because in the end, the question becomes, if you make a reduction, how are we going to reallocate staff time and other supports to meet those requirements? We are confident we can do that and still hit this target, but it's something that we're going to need to work out the particulars of with every single school and program.
Good, and I'm glad that -- it shouldn't even need to be said, but I feel the need to say it partly because of the way I feel about it and because of what I've heard from the community, that meeting the needs of our students and satisfying the requirements of their IEPs is not only a moral imperative, it's frankly a legal obligation, and we would be foolish to do anything less, because we would just be exposing the district to significant liability. So as far as I'm concerned, that is absolute table stakes to be providing education. We need to make sure that we have the resources to meet the needs of our students receiving services under an IEP, our Individualized Education Plan. And then, if I could, one other item. I have, as a parent, a visceral reaction to the idea of increasing class sizes. And I think it's possible that it's -- every indication that I have at this point is that that is a justified reaction, that increasing class sizes by one, which in most cases, the way I look at the numbers, that means the classes that are currently among the smallest throughout our schools would, where an increase in class sizes resulted in the elimination of a section, they would become among the largest sections in that grade level. That has significant, even in those isolated incidences, over the long term, that, I believe, will have significant impact on the ability of our students to learn and to achieve their full potential. But I also don't feel like I have a great basis, other than my own visceral reaction and the feedback that I've received from the community, which is not insignificant. And I'm hoping that at some stage, we can, you can share with the board some baseline information or some regulatory requirements, some, like, guardrails of how it is that we, as a district, decide what an appropriate class size is, and if there's evidence-based best practices for what an optimal class size is in order to achieve our broader, deeper learning goals, I think that should be, you know, part of the analysis, too. And so I feel the need to support the administration's proposal to reduce the budget by the amount that's been targeted, but increasing class sizes and removing teachers from the classroom is very strong medicine. And I am hopeful that as this process plays out, that a really critical lens is going to be placed on every single item in the budget. I'm not prepared to say which other areas that perhaps haven't been looked at as carefully up to now, but I know in the private sector and in the world that I'm familiar with, budget reduction exercises are part of daily life, frankly, and sometimes, good ideas come out of them. Sometimes, it's never fun, but it can be an opportunity to reimagine how to provide services with the ultimate goal. In the business world, it's always easy, well, what's going to increase the bottom line, what's going to, you know, make our product more competitive and so on? But the ultimate goal here is students. What helps advance the interests of our students? And I just, I'm hopeful that as this process plays out, that really critical examination might identify aspects that are different than increasing class sizes or removing direct services to students.
Superintendent.
I appreciate that. I need you to know, if, were we to take class size and special education off the table, Director Cook, the math doesn't work. And, boy, would I like to do that. I also think we heard powerfully from the staff at Dakota, when I asked, what multi-tiered systems of support? You had a classroom teacher name some of the support positions that are sometimes described as fluff. And I heard saying, boy, we didn't have that at Dakota. And, boy, we felt it in the classroom. And I have sympathy, because I was in the classroom once a long time ago, too, for people to think, if you're not here, you're fluff. But we just heard a classroom teacher give a powerful testimonial to what it was like to open a school without some of those supports. So I'm with you, and yes, creativity can come from hard times. We will keep looking, for sure. We will bring you more fine-grained analysis of what the class size shifts would mean. For those of us in the education field, the debates over class size are long and complex. And so, yes, we'll bring you those impacts, and if there are ways to pull back any of the reductions that are in what we've described for you here, I'd be the first one to be thrilled to bring them forward. And the more hard questions you ask us, the, either better the proposal will be, or at least the more confident we'll be that we've done our homework.
Director McLaughlin.
I just had a few minor things to touch on, that I was looking at board docs, and unless I'm missing something, I don't think I'm seeing this presentation in board docs.
We made this up this afternoon, so it will get in there.
And I bring that up just to be transparent, that this is really important for our families and our staff to see, particularly things like the timelines, and I want to make sure that they have an easy access to get to it if they can, so I appreciate that. The other question I have, Mr. Carlson, is, it's related to your answers to Chair Nathan's questions. Is it okay for me to ask a clarification on that?
Okay, yes.
That, it should be something that will be easy for you to answer, but I wanted to make sure I understood it. And now I can't read this, because it's so small. And I'll just give my general question, and you can find the place then. When you talked about when a class size gets to the plus two, that section, I want to make sure that we're talking about, you said plus two, I think, in the building? I want to make, is that the grade level in the building?
Yes, so it's at the grade level in the building, when all classes have hit two above the target. Target is not a cap, target is what we aim for. That's when we jump into action and we start deploying resources from our contingency budget. So we put a little bit of side extra, like, and then Jackie Carl and I, we meet, and we're like, okay, it's time to roll out another teacher.
And I think what was missing from your answer, then, was the grade level, because I was thinking, we're not going to wait at an elementary for K to five to all get plus two before we do this. It's at the grade level.
Correct. We're looking at, like, first grade only, second grade only, in that building.
Okay, that's, I was hoping that was the answer, yes, thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
Any other comments? I guess the only thing I'd add, in the, sort of build on what Director Cook said and the feedback that we've been getting from the community is, and you said it, the math doesn't work with some of the other options. And I don't know if it, if it's possible, or if it's helpful, to talk about what you didn't put on the list, right? Because you had more recommendations than you brought to us. You had a group of people who looked at it and looked at all areas of the budget. I mean, you've kind of gone through that process already, looking at every job classification, department, et cetera. And I don't know if it would be helpful for board members or for the community to see how much else we would have to add up in a column to get to those two large numbers that are relevant to, for example, the teachers and the ESPs. I don't know how you feel about that.
I appreciate the question, Chair Nathan. Let me, without dodging the question, let me say, let me give two macro examples of things I considered and rejected, so people know that this was a difficult decision, and what you're getting is the least worst, I think, option, I mean, the most strategic option. But I also, just for obvious reasons, we're now at the moment where we literally want to start this process tomorrow, and so I would not, I would respectfully not urge board members to say, wait, bring us back that one right now, just because of time, because we had a good study session. But let me give you two examples. One was to actually take $7 million that we are, that I'm proposing to you, we allocate from our federal COVID dollars, and actually not use it to avoid cuts, and actually use it for more intensive interventions tied to recovery from the pandemic. And I know board members have received some letters from parents and others about that, too. And that would have been $7, $7 million more, largely in class size, had we not walled off the second thing that I'm going to mention. I have some sympathy for that, because I would like to use those $7 million to do high dosage tutoring, to do intensive reading blocks, to do mentoring programs. That would be new supports, because we know, from the data in Rochester and everywhere else, these kids have gone through a historic pandemic that has impacted their academic readiness. I ultimately felt that the $7 million in keeping our very committed staff in that $7 million in place was something that I didn't feel comfortable with and rejected. The second, were reductions more in the space of what we might call student support services, counselors, social workers, school psychologists, mental health. There are not nearly as many of them as there are people in the classroom, so that, to Director Cook's question, that doesn't get us to the math. But I think this board has made a commitment to do more, not less, in that space, and so that reduction was also, well, now, I'm not saying there's no positions in any of those categories that will ultimately be before you in June, but that was another area that I felt we needed to preserve, the very talented but insufficient capacity we have in those areas right now. And so that is largely not in this proposal as well, though it could have been. And that, all of that is a discussion that we'll continue to have over the next several months. Does that sort of answer some of those, some of the options that were there? It was in the memo, it's just a final point, but it's always important to make it. Reductions have been made, and to the extent it needs to be made, in administration, including at the most senior levels of the district. And so it's important for people to understand that. We know the closest you are to kids, the closest you are to that point where the magic happens, the critical work happens, first in the classroom, but then in all the many other supports. I agree with that. But we also know if we don't have the people and the systems to improve-- But we also know if we don't have the people and the systems to improve, we don't support those people working with those students. But those reductions have, have even been made in anticipation of this, and there, there are others included in this package that you'll get in June.
And one other area that was covered in the questions that were submitted and asked before the study session is that all of the information that we've received are about cutting FTEs. But all the FTEs that may be reduced don't necessarily have people in those positions, because we have a number of unfilled positions. And I think the comparison that was made is the cuts, the, the budget reduction FTEs add up to about 143.6, but we currently have 113 FTEs that are not filled. So while there might be, in the end, some staff put on unrequested leave of absence, because there's not a matchup, there is that pot of positions that don't have people in them. And that's what we would, that's what we cut first. Is that, is that accurate?
There's a whole technical process, you follow contract language, so, but yes, having vacancies is going to help reduce the numbers of people that wouldn't have a position at the end of this.
Right. And that will all come out based on your staffing conversations in individual buildings and in the district departments? Any other questions or comments from board members?
I have one comment. I did get asked a couple of times, you know, since, at least to other people, it seems like we double up mental health services, because we have mental health professionals, school psychologists within the school, but then we also contract for school-based mental health providers who are like technically outpatient. And so somebody was asking me, like, why wouldn't you just get rid of all of the mental health professionals that are in the school and maintain only the ones that are contracted? And I will just say, there are not enough of us to do that. So like, as part of, you know, like, it, it's not that we are duplicating the service, we are filling additional service need. And if you took away the people who are already providing that service, who are school district employees, you would be, you wouldn't, you would, I guess, maybe in that sense, saving money, because you wouldn't even be able to give it to us to use, to provide the service. So then there would be nothing there for the kids. And I, I certainly would be in favor of things like that, because I think a lot of people don't understand how that works. And I also feel, I appreciate your passion and, and sort of your opening remarks for this item. And Director Cook, I have those same visceral, visceral reactions. And I think because it hurts. It hurts all of us to do this. And I think when, you know, cabinet members were coming to us, you know, when we were talking about contract negotiations, which did include pay raises, and when there were some of those, like, you know, one-time incentive pays for different groups of, of staff, there was no doubt in my mind that any of that was deserved, and they probably all deserve, no, not probably, they all deserved more than we gave them. And we, this was like a long, you know, like, we could see the slap in the face was coming, like, we're giving you this money to show you that we value and appreciate you, and then we're going to have to take things away from you at a certain point, because we don't have enough in the budget. And I appreciate sort of the ire towards, like, the state government for, like, where's our money? Because I don't view it as a budget surplus so much as that, that's unpaid service to us. And so if we had the money and the funding adjustments, we wouldn't be here right now.
Director Barlow?
Yeah, and the only thing I would, I, I share as my fellow board members, classroom IEPs. I do think it's important, however, to perhaps address the misinformation that's out there, that even in terms of public comment, I think sometimes statements are made, they're, since we don't respond at the time of public comment, their comments are allowed to fly, people may not know any different or know any better. So is there a way, in terms of messaging, we can not necessarily put to rest, because people will continue to believe whatever they choose to believe, but to at least speak to it to some degree?
Yeah, Director Barlow, I, I really appreciate that idea. Chair Nathan also had an idea yesterday, whenever we met, about a communication at this point to all staff following board action. So the communications piece is critical, both internally and externally here. I think, you know, often a frequently asked questions is a good tool to say, isn't it true that? And then we can kind of respond. And, you know, where it's true, we'll say, yes, it's true, but where it's not, that can be. John mentioned, and you can see up there, that we are thinking in May, when we have enough specificity to be really clear, we will do, like we did last year, some public input sessions. John and I did virtual ones, which were very free-ranging, but we captured feedback. So we'll, I think, on the whole, that worked pretty well, but we want to, we want to think about it. We also want to do it at a time when it's far enough in our process to be pretty clear, but early enough to be able to give you the feedback when you're voting. So that could be another opportunity to do some of that, sort of, some of the misinformation that's out there. I will say, it is, it seems ancient history right now, but this is the same school district that received a flawless audit of our books. That is not an insignificant thing for a $350 million organization, not one finding. We know where our money is, and it is scrupulously well-monitored under John's leadership. We have a structural problem in the balance between revenues and expenditures. This is not a case of mismanagement or lack of foresight on the part of, you know, this board and, and our, and our leadership at this time. So it's important to remember that. Like, we are not in this position because of any issue with our transparency, our accounting, things like that. These are hard decisions for some of the reasons Dr. Garcia just spoke to.
And I think it's also important to remind people who aren't tied into the calendar of the school board, like we are, or people who may have just heard about the budget reductions for next year and are, are getting engaged in our work, that we first heard about these deficits for the next three years in December of 2021. And in January of 2022, we approved a plan, a three-year plan, with numbers that look very similar to the numbers. The only real growth in the number was the seven, the $7 million deficit, but the $7 million in budget reductions being increased to 14 for this year. All of the other components, the OPEB, the other use of the COVID funds, was proposed to us in December of 2021. So I would say credit to Mr. Carlson, because I remember conversations about this even before then, looking at the fiscal cliff that was coming. Just like if you look at our five-year forecast going forward, that he last presented to us, you know, we're, we're not out of the woods a few years down the road, barring whatever happens with the state legislature. So this has been bad news for a while, and I'm confident in what's been presented to us in terms of the recommendations, that they are tied to solving the problem, as uncomfortable and unfortunate as they might be. Director Cook?
One other thing, I, I would reiterate the gratitude for the district's financial management and stewardship. Exercising fiduciary responsibility and, and making difficult choices is not fun, but it is valued and it is necessary, and I absolutely appreciate that. The other thing that I'm grateful for is that the strategic plan was formulated over the previous 18 months, and is available now as a rubric to assess these kind of priority decisions. And in particular, to continue to pursue evidence-based multi-tiered systems of supports, science of reading, and ultimately, student-centered deeper learning. And I, I absolutely appreciate that that is able to be a, something that we can all look to, and that the administration has looked to in, in proposing the, the items that it has. So, so thank you for that.
Board members, any other comments? Superintendent, any closing comments?
I appreciate that Director Cook mentions the strategic plan. This conversation is one I know we all will, but we should remember, as we get into the work next year that is called for in that strategic plan, of redesigning the way we fund and staff our schools. And by design, next year is the design year for that, with implementation beginning the following year. And so by 2025, the way this board thinks about the allocation of staffing, specialist positions, could be significantly different than the process. I'm glad we're not trying to do that now, because there's only so much change the system can bear. And we are getting in place our vision of multi-tiered systems of support, and deeper learning, and science of reading. But next year, we're going to be reconsidering this entire process. There are different ways we could approach this, and this will be a very important discussion for us to have. We will, I'm also excited, have a community budget advisory committee that will be in place this spring and very much operating by next year, with folks, we hope, both internally and externally, who have, who have expertise and passion for resource allocation. So it's a, it's a point that is not immediately before the board, because we got to get over the decisions that are before you in June. But we are not consigned to live in this system in perpetuity. There are other ways we could staff and allocate resources to schools and programs, and we've named in the strategic plan that we're going to take a hard look at that next year.
So hearing no other discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Carlson. Our next agenda item is 8.02, the February 2nd, 2023 Policy Committee Recommendations on Procedures. This is an action item. Procedures are updated periodically to align with changes in school board policies or document current practices. Changes in procedures may be made at any time during the year, but must be reviewed by the school board within the fiscal year, and may be approved at a single meeting of the school board. I will read the resolution and ask for a motion, and if it's received, I'll open the floor for information and discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 accept the recommendations of the Policy Committee for the procedures listed. Procedure 203.05, School Board Meeting Agenda, 203.06A, Consent Agenda, 204A, School Board Meeting Minutes, 209A, Code of Ethics, 212A, School Board Member Development, and 416A, Drug and Alcohol Testing.
Moved and seconded.
Has been moved and seconded. Just to remind board members, these were procedures that came from our work, taking our school board protocols and documenting them in our school board, or in our procedure manual, along with some additional procedures that were related to previous policies that we have approved. And I don't know who's starting. Julie?
I am. Procedure 203.05, School Board Meeting Agenda. The purpose of this new procedure is to provide guidelines and internal support systems to facilitate development of school board meeting agendas, and to ensure efficient use of staff time in addressing school board member questions. Procedure 203.06, Consent Agenda. The purpose of this new procedure is to provide guidelines and internal and approval of school board consent agenda items, and to ensure efficient use of staff time in addressing school board member questions.
Procedure 204A, School Board Meeting Minutes. The purpose of this new procedure is to provide guidelines and internal support systems to facilitate development and approval of school board minutes. Procedure 209A, Code of Ethics. The purpose of this procedure is to provide guidelines and internal support systems to promote the professional behaviors of school board members within the School Board Code of Ethics.
Procedure 212A, School Board Member Development. The purpose of this new procedure is to provide guidelines and internal support systems to facilitate school board member leadership and professional development. Procedure 416A, Drug and Alcohol Testing. This procedure provides updated forms to be used to support policy 416, Drug and Alcohol Testing.
Procedure 709A.1, Notification to Employer of Moving Violation Form. Procedure 709A.2, Notification to Employer of Suspension, Revocation, Cancellation, or Disqualification Form. And Procedure 709A.3, Copy of Type III School Bus Driver Notification to Employer of Violation Form. These procedures provide updated forms to be used to support policy 709, Student Transportation Safety.
Any questions or comments, board members? Director Cook?
I'll read the, the forms related to Procedure 416A, Drug and Alcohol Testing. But either the, the link is not good, or the forms have not actually been updated, because they're all dated in 2005.
You are correct.
But we also, I think, make, need to make sure that we don't update forms before they've been voted on by the board.
The draft should be in there.
The draft should be correct, but...
I know, the board is looking like I'm looking. Let me look. I'm not sure there were content changes. It may actually just have been the...
The date and logo?
The date and logo.
Well, Madam Sheriff, there's not a prescient need to approve these tonight. Could they not be simply placed on the agenda for approval at the next board meeting? In that, we don't actually see the forms before us?
We could, I think table is the right word. Is table the right word?
Table until, until a particular date.
Yes. Somebody would like to make a motion to table until a specific date?
I know that we table this item until our next regular board meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose? All right. Thank you, Director Barlow, for that simple solution.
My pleasure.
Now we need to vote on all the other procedures?
No, we're going to table the whole thing.
Oh, we're taking, pulling all of them?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Director Cook. Next item is 8.03, Approval of Gifts and Donations. This is an action item. And the reason this is a separate action item, board members, is that policy 706 requires a two-thirds vote of the board to approve gifts and donations. So I'll read the resolution, ask for motion and second. If received, I'll open the floor for discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the monetary gifts and donations received in the amount of $354,793.83. The property and equipment donations received in the estimated amount of $5,831.97. And the monetary gifts and donations received by student activities in the amount of $42,524.31.
Move and approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Questions, discussion? I'm sure Mr. Carlson would answer any questions, if anybody has any. This is going to come to us once or twice a year? Twice a year. Director Cook?
Well, on the monetary donations report, I just wanted to highlight a couple of items that I noticed here. There are several grants from D, the Minnesota Department of Economic and Employment Development, to adult basic ed. And I have the great fortune this week, the great privilege this week, to visit Hawthorne Education Center and see some of that work in action, with the employment pathway navigators that help around 750 students, many of, almost all of whom do not speak English as a first language, for one thing, not only learn English, but also learn information that's helpful in preparing for a citizenship exam, and navigating American culture, and, and developing basic reading and, and mathematics skills, with the ultimate goal of obtaining employment and a, a living wage, which is, as I was there and as I had the privilege to visit, I was so incredibly proud of the staff there, and that I had any association with them in the, the work that they do to uplift... any association with them in the work that they do to uplift people and transition them from them and their families, from poverty to a living wage career, but also just proud of the students for how hard they worked. And every single one of them, as adults, want to be there. I mean, truly, truly want to be there, or are taking great pains in some case to do so. So, and the critical work of those career pathways that the Hawthorne Education Center is able to offer are enabled by that staff's extra work to not only do the instruction in literacy and mathematics, and English as a second language, but also to apply for and receive these grants through D. And they're not insignificant amounts, and they represent enormous contributions to our community.
Thank you. Any other comments? I also want to point out that there are $5,000, $1,500 in non-monetary donations, all through Donors Choose. So if anyone out there is looking to help our students, check out, or help our teachers, check out Donors Choose to see how you might be able to contribute to their requests. They are numerous, but I know the teachers carefully identify those needs in their classroom, and there are regular opportunities to donate. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with a two-thirds majority. All right. Next item on the agenda is the annual board calendar update. Anybody have any items that you'd like to bring forward for consideration on our future agenda? Great. Item 10.01, Board Questions and Responses. If it hasn't already been loaded, the questions from this board meeting, it is on there. Thank you, Lori. Is available on Board Doc, so you can see the questions and the answers specific to the agenda items on tonight's meeting in that document. Item 10.02, Upcoming Board Meetings. We have a regular meeting on February 21, a study session on February 28, a regular meeting on March 7, and a regular meeting on March 21. And if you were following our original schedule of meetings, we had a study session on March 14, but we have canceled that study session, and it's been removed from the school board calendar. Any other business for the good? If not, this meeting is adjourned at 8:15 p.m.